Is the Thursday, January 6, 2022, meeting of the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the State of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier News, on the township website and within the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting. Link to the virtual meeting via WebEx, call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website and/or in the planning and zoning department in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. Reminder to the board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicant's witnesses have finished presenting, at which time the chair will ask the board for their comment. Instructions for the public input, for those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there, please raise your hand. Wait, press the raise hand button to a... Mark, you wrote all over this thing. Press the raise hand button to use this feature. Click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click the hand icon. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press three star. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have the opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If you are providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After you're done speaking, if you're on WebEx, please press the lower hand button. If you're calling in, please press star three again. Okay, Mr. Thomas.
We have oath of office for two reappointed members.
There's just one, sir, Robert Shepherd. And he, we're going to do the oath of office on the screen virtually. Robert Shepherd came to my office this morning, and I have notarized, and he signed his oath of office in front of me. I notarized it. I have a copy, and Anne Marie has a copy in the clerk's office, has the original.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd, if you can raise your right hand, and you can repeat after me. I, Robert Shepherd.
I, Robert Shepherd.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I would support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and to this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all of the duties of the Board of Adjustment regular member.
That I will perform all of the duties of a regular member of the Board of Adjustment of Franklin Township.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. You are now sworn back in, and that's for a four-year term ending December 31, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. It is an honor and a privilege.
So now we are going to nominate a chairperson.
I nominate Bob Thomas.
Second.
I guess I'll just call people to make sure. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Oh, am I supposed to ask Mr. Thomas if anybody else wants to make a nomination? I'm sorry, I don't know. Am I supposed to...
The proper way to do it, Christine, is just, are there any other nominations? If there are not, then you could take a vote.
Are there any other nominations before I take a vote for Mr. Thomas? Seeing nobody say anything. Joel, you first that nomination, and Mr. Shepherd, you second. So I've already asked Cheryl Bethia, and she has said yes. Mr. Prokanic?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
I don't know why I'm calling you guys. Mr. Allen Rich?
Yeah.
Gary Rosenthal? Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Elizabeth Clarkin?
Yes.
And I guess you don't vote for yourself, Mr. Thomas, is that correct?
This time, I will, yes.
Okay. Okay. So congratulations, you're the chair again. Welcome.
Okay, I want to thank the board for their confidence. It truly is a privilege and an honor to serve on this board, especially with such really dedicated, competent, stable people. I think this board does a great job. And it is a board, it's not any one person. Like to take nominations now for vice chair?
I nominate Robert Shepherd.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, call the roll.
Nobody seconded.
I thought I heard a second, I guess not.
I'm sorry. Did, I'm sorry. Who seconded? I apologize.
I'll second it.
I can second.
Okay. You guys are leaving me hanging tonight. Cheryl? Richard?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Gary?
Unmute yourself, Gary.
Hey, Gary, you're unmuted now.
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
I don't think I'm supposed to vote for myself, but if I am, yes.
Bob Thomas, that's a vote for himself, so. Basim?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Robert Thomas?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to, and congratulations, by the way, I look forward to working with you again. Hopefully, we will actually physically be able to work together at some point this year. Board attorney interviews, I'd like to bring Mark in to my... If I'm not mistaken, there was one set of applications or one set of paperwork that we were given.
Yes, so it did go out for a request for proposals. We received one proposal from the Dakota's Law Firm for which Mr. Regan is employed, and he is here tonight. The normal per year bylaws, you are to interview the prospective attorney. So I think this is the opportunity for the board to interview Mr. Regan.
Okay, the only thing I would, I'd just like to hear from Mr. Reagan that he does want to continue. And the question I would have is that, only question I would have, because I'm really quite happy with the representation, is that his schedule hasn't changed, and he'll be able to maintain basically the same schedule that we have in the past and be able to attend the meetings.
Yes, as to your first question, Mr. Chairman, I'd be more than happy to continue serving the board as its attorney, and my schedule has not changed, and I'm prepared to to attend the two meetings per month, as well as any special meetings that may be scheduled.
Okay, thanks. Any other board questions? Okay, if not, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to rehire Frank Reagan and his firm.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Unmute yourself again, Gary.
Hey, Gary. Go ahead.
I got off WebEx for some reason, I don't know why.
Would you like, would you like your...
Yes.
Thank you.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Elizabeth Clarkin?
Yes.
And Chairman, oh my God, Chairman Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Last item under the reorganization, that would be to swear Mark in as a witness for the year.
Mark, if you want to just raise your right hand, do you swear that any testimony that you may provide with regards to any matter that comes before the board this year, 2022, will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. And just for the record, still have my professional planner's license and good standing and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners.
Good, thank you.
Okay, that works for us. I guess we go to the roll call.
Cheryl Bethia?
Here.
Richard Prokanic?
Here.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Basim Verdas?
Here.
Elizabeth Clarkin?
Here.
And Chairman Thomas?
Here. Minutes for the regular meeting, November 4, 2021, we need a motion.
I move to step.
I'll segment.
One minute, guys. Mr. Thomas, we'd like to talk about 1784 Capital before we start the hearings. That way, if anybody's on listening, they don't have to go through all this.
Yeah, well, let's do the minutes and then we'll...
Okay. So who, Joel first and Cheryl second, correct?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich Prokanic?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Elizabeth Clarkin?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Would you want to adopt the calendar first?
Yeah, that's fine.
You should have gotten an email with a copy of the calendar for next year. If there's no, if there are no adjustments or comments or anything, we'll take a motion to approve that.
I move to approve the calendar for 2022.
I second.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Rich Prokanic?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Elizabeth Clarkin? Jean?
Yes. Sorry.
That's okay, Chairman Thomas?
Yes. And now we have a notice of a rescheduled hearing.
Do you want to do the resolution for Saha Rose since you're on a roll, or do you want to...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the only two that cannot vote or do not respond is Basim and Elizabeth. So anybody else can make the first and second motion?
I moved to...
I'll second, Gary.
Okay. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Rich Prokanic?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, now the notice.
Okay, so let me just bring this up real quick. See my emails. Okay. How come it's not sharing? Jen? Stop. Mark, is there any way you can, I don't know where Jen went, she may went to the bathroom. It brings up like my emails, but it doesn't bring up, I'm trying to bring up the actual...
Christine, if you're able to read the link on the top, so it's being carried to what date?
I'll do it, I was just trying to bring up the thing. If you're here this evening for the hearing for 1784 Capital Holdings LLC, docket number ZBA 2100009. It's a D1 use variance preliminary and final major site plan with C variances in which the applicant is seeking approval for construction of a 125,335 square foot self-storage facility at 1613 Route 27 Somerset, Block 85, Lots 58 and 59.02 in Zone GB. This matter is being carried to February 3, 2022, at 7:30 PM in a virtual formatted meeting. No notification is needed. For those wishing to participate in the hearing via virtual WebEx, the event address for the attendees will be posted on Franklin Township's website For those wishing to listen via telephone, the call-in number is 1408-418-9388, and the access code for that meeting is 2332-228-1850. This information will be posted to the Franklin Township website, probably no later than next Tuesday. I'll give them a, you know, give them a time to get it up there. And if you need, if you have any other questions, if you need this information, you can call me directly at 732-873-2500, and my extension is 6215. Okay, Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. Before we move to the hearings, there's another, there's a comment I want to make in the form of a general notice to the public that's waiting out there to call in and speak on different applications. It has come to my attention this week, and I physically saw a petition online called Sign Here. A group of people circulating a petition, encouraging people to come to this zoning board meeting tonight at 7:30 to express their concerns both concerning an application at the Kmart Plaza, which we have heard rumors about. This board does not accept open public discussion. We have public comments and public discussions only on applications that are reheard at a zoning board hearing. So if you're one of the people who were encouraged to show up here tonight to speak about that application, don't, don't call, because we're not going to be listening to any discussion publicly or otherwise concerning that application. I just want to remind the public, the board has yet to receive any paperwork concerning that application, that potential application. And in fact, we're not even aware that it's actually officially been scheduled for a hearing. But the zoning board does not, as I said, have open public discussions. Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to hearings, Anita Khan, ZBA 210023, variant, C variance in which the applicant proposes to build a 14 by 31 one-story accessory structure with a one-car garage and craft room at 34 Laurel Avenue, Kingston, Block 2, Lot 1 in Zone R10. Okay, let's bring in the people associated with that application.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me? This is Anita.
Can hear you, can't see you.
Yeah. Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Khan, this is Frank Reagan, the board attorney. You don't have anybody representing you, you're going to be presenting this yourself?
I am, and I have my architect with me in case technical questions come up, Mr....
Okay, before you proceed, if we, I just want to swear you in, if you could just raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
All right, could we just also swear the architect in too at the same time?
If, yep. If you could just give us your name and then raise your right hand.
Dan Fortunato, I'm an architect, he's still in New Jersey.
Okay, if you, do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, why don't I start and just give a brief overview of the application? This is a residential property, it's located at 34 Laurel Avenue. It's located in the R10 residential zone. It's a triangular-shaped property with frontage on Laurel Avenue and Church Street, and then the third property line is a side property line. The applicant is currently occupied by residents. The applicant's proposing a 14 by 31, approximately 400 square foot accessory structure, one-story accessory structure that would consist of a garage and a small craft room behind the garage. There are two variances that are required by this application. One is a front yard setback, since it is located off of, the setback off of Church Street is a required front yard, and at the structure is proposed 13.5 feet from that front property line. So that's the first variance. And then along that other property line I talked about, that's a side property line. The required setback is eight feet, and they're proposing four. It is my understanding that the applicant has appeared before the Historic Township Historic Commission, because it is located in a Township Historic District, and that the application has been revised to be consistent with recommendations of the Historic Commission. So that's the background. It may help for either the applicant or the architect to describe their discussion with the Historic Commission and how the appearance of the accessory structure has been revised to comply with their comments.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Hi, everyone, this is Anita. I bought the home in August of this, not this year, actually, 2021, and the only thing missing right now in the home is a garage. And I proposed, I think sometime in September, engaged the fortunate architect, Dan Fortunato, to build the design for me for the garage. And in the back end of the garage, there'll be, I'll be replacing the shed, which is existing, but putting a kind of a craftsroom or what I would call a storage craftsroom to store some of my hobby stuff. So that's the plan. As Mr. Haley said, the plot is triangle shape, and couldn't find any other spot where the garage could go, so therefore the variance request. We did go to the Historic Commission in October, and they asked us to revise our plan a bit. Two things they wanted us to do. One was to bring down the roof of the proposed garage to match the match, to match the garage next door of my neighbor. And also, kind of from an aesthetics perspective, the look and the feel of it should be exactly like how my home is from a front standpoint. So we revised that, and they also, the second thing they requested was the picture of the garage or door, and the door should look similar to the door, the front door of the home. And the page three has the new drawing in the submission done today. And you'll see the door as well as the door for, as well as the doors, the secondary doors and the windows. So those were the two things they had asked, we revised. We submitted it to the subcommittee of the Historical Commission, and they approved it in December, the first week of December.
Okay. You said something in the beginning of what you were discussing in that the shed that is all the way at the back, or since that seems to be the looking, oh, that's, that's the side that, that's not Church Street, that's the other side. But there's a shed, you're going to get rid of that shed?
Yes, yes, Mr. Shepherd. So that's all the way in the corner of actually Church Street. So it's all the way to the end of the home, yeah, in the corner of Church Street.
Okay.
It's going to be replaced, it's a very, very old shed, and I saw it, actually.
Yep, that's my question, thank you. And I believe you mentioned that because of the triangular shape of the property, you have very little flexibility in order to place it in different places to maybe make the setback variances disappear.
That's right, Mr. Thomas. And also, there's this beautiful tree on the side of the, where the proposed garage is, like 150 years old, I understand, it's a Japanese blossom. If I shift the garage even like by maybe four feet, I would have to cut that tree down. So we took everything into consideration, my friend here, Dan, to do the best design possible, given the size and the size of the plot and the way it is. Anything to add?
We worked very closely with Mr. Dominic, Vince Dominic, and we were guided through him on the best location. We did a few iterations of how to do the garage, either run it parallel to the one property line or run it perpendicular to the driveway, all different scenarios. But this seemed to be the best one that worked for everyone, be it that we still get some decent clearance on the Church Street side, about 13 and a half feet. The old shed is right on the property line, just about. So we're going to be taking that down and then putting, replacing the shed with part of the new structure, further away from Church Street. However, the way the house is, existing house is, to pull straight into this garage, we were sort of forced to really go within four feet of the property line. So that way, we don't have to really bend around a curve of the house. We could certainly work with having them, having them just to go, having you to be able to pull straight in.
Yeah.
The Historical Committee wanted this to be parallel to the neighbor. So that's a lot of why we did what we, why it's positioned as you see it today.
Okay, anything else?
Speaking of neighbors, has anybody said anything about your building? For those, Khan?
I've had no concerns from the neighbors, Ms. Rich.
Okay, very good.
Quite the contrary, actually, none of them had any issues.
Perfect, okay. What about utilities? Will there be utilities in this building?
Just electrical.
Okay, that's all I got, thank you. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any board, other board members have questions?
Yes, I just have one question. So the, the decision to lower the roof is, is that reflected in the alternate elevation on the plans?
Yes, yes, you see that there's probably two front elevations shown, uh, but the one in the middle, which is the, uh, less slope, uh, if you will, because we're trying to match, as Nina mentioned, as part of historical committee requirements. So we adjusted the aesthetic of it by lowering the roof pitch of the, uh, of the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're open to the public.
Okay, so before we open to the public again, we'll remind the public that right now, this is a hearing on this application. Um, so if you have any comments or questions on this application to the board, if you're calling in, you can press star three. If you are participating via WebEx, you can re, use the raised hand button. I'll just remind the, uh, the public how to do that. Click on the participants icon in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. Give the public a few minutes to, uh, indicate their desire to ask questions or make comments on this application. Christine, can you check as well, because the new, um, raised hand thing is sometimes hard to see? Just scroll through the attendee list.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anybody.
Yep, I'm not seeing anybody either, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll, we'll close to the public and then, uh, I'm not, unless someone on, anyone on the board feels they need any more comments, clarifications, or information, we'll, we'll take a, uh, motion for. All right, move that we grant Anita Khan, uh, a, uh, variance is required to erect her garage at thirty-four Laurel Avenue, Kingston, New Jersey.
And if I could suggest that that be subject to the design, including the roof line recommended by the Historic Commission?
So men, I'm amending my, uh, my approval to, to include that.
A second.
Need a second, okay.
A second. Okay, uh, Charlotte Thea?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Joel Reese? Joel?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next hearing. Mal Gersada Seraphin, ZBA twenty-one oh 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 twenty-five. Certification of pre-existing non-conforming use stating a two-family main home and a detached single-family dwelling to the rear of the property at eighteen Home Street, uh, Somerset Block one eighty-one, lots twenty-four and twenty-five in the R seven zone. So we'll need everybody involved in that to be brought into the meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Adjustment. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Okay, I want to make sure all my witnesses are on board, and that would be Mr. and Mrs. Seraphin?
We're, yes, we are.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Dave Bicus? Dave?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and Ed Rosowski?
I'm here.
Okay, I think Mr. Rosowski had, oh, okay, he's on board. Uh, we can see you. Is that you, Ed? No, where's Ed Rosowski? Because I know we had some difficulty getting video. There you go. Okay, we are ready to proceed, Mr. Chair, when, when you are.
You, I'll go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, by way of background, this is an application for pre-existing non-conforming uses located at eighteen Home Street, and the property is further identified as tax maps, lots twenty-four and twenty-five in block one eighty-one. Uh, it's not an application for a D variance or an application for a C variance. So those type of proofs are not necessary and not warranted. In this type of application, the applicant needs to prove, uh, what is set forth in comment number one of the TRC memorandum dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, that the uses existed prior to the zoning ordinance. And for everyone's information, the first zoning ordinance in Franklin Township is acknowledged to be enacted in October of nineteen fifty-eight. And then we'd have to prove that the uses have remained uninterrupted and have been in existence since that time. Uh, the pre-existing uses in this application consist of a two-family residential dwelling and a detached single-family dwelling to the rear of the property. And what brought us to the board this evening was a, a partial fire that occurred in the rear structure, uh, where some interior work had to be done. So, uh, Mr. Seraphin went and applied for a construction permit to, uh, uh, re, restore the interior of the premises. And when it went back to zoning, uh, zoning indicated that we needed some zoning, uh, permit to, uh, uh, effectuate the reconstruction. So that's why we're here tonight, to prove and establish that the, uh, rear, rear dwelling, as well as the main dwelling, are pre-existing non-conforming uses. Uh, to that end, I have, uh, was very fortunate enough to get the son of the former owner of the property, Mr. Rosowski, who's seventy-four years old and who could testify as to the history of the property. And he'll be talking about, uh, the fact that his family had resided on the property, and he grew up on the property. And at all times prior to the, around the fifties, when he was a, a youth, uh, both dwellings have been rented. So that, that's what we expect to hear from Mr. Rosowski. We then have, uh, Mal Gersada Seraphin. Let's call her Margaret, because she does go by the name Margaret, and her husband today is Seraphin. Uh, they'll kind of be testifying together because Margaret has a little bit of problem with the English language, although she certainly knows what, what she's talking about. So we will swear bo- both of them in at the same time, hopefully. And then I have David Bicus. David's gonna testify as an expert in the dating of buildings. And he previously was qualified as such by this board in an application heard and approved last year. I think it was Zen Liu, and the property was on Victor Street, and it had a similar, uh, characteristics in terms of, uh, dating of the buildings. Uh, so he'll testify that both the main building and the detached dwelling structures were built in or around nineteen thirty-five, which was even before I was born, and were built as residential.
I can't believe that.
Okay, and were built as residential structures. Uh, so without further ado, uh, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, whether you want to swear everybody in at the same time or have Mr. Reagan swear everybody in at the same time?
We can do that, and, and so why don't we have everybody that's going to testify raise their right hand? Um, and swear that, uh, any testimony that, uh, you're about to give as part of this hearing will be the truth and nothing but the truth.
Dave Bicus, yes, I do.
Thank you. If everybody can just give their name and just say that they've sworn. Take in the oath and.
Margaret?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
And that leaves Ed?
Oh, yep.
Ed?
Ed, one more time?
Yes, I do.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ed, you're first up. Would you tell the board where you currently reside? Uh, do you hear me?
Ed?
Is somebody talking to me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I reside right now in four fifty-seven Nazareth, Pennsylvania.
Okay.
Here since nineteen seventy-two.
Okay, are you the only son of the late Helen Rosowski, and your father was Joseph Rosowski?
You're correct.
And how old are you, Ed?
Uh, seventy-five, going to be seventy-six.
Okay, when you, when you submitted the certification, you were seventy-four, so you're now, time flies when you're having fun, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay, right, uh. At some point in two thousand and four, your family sold the property to, uh, Margaret Seraphin, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, the property, again, is identified as eighteen Home Street.
Correct.
Now, what, what can you tell the board about the, uh, your family's ownership of the property? How long they've owned it and what it was used for?
Well, my parents bought the house in nineteen fifty-eight, and, uh, we lived there, um, uh, for about forty-some years. Uh, the, the, the second house was always rented out to, uh, 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 her, I think her name was Margaret Michlon. She was an older woman. I think she rented the house to, from us probably at least twenty-some years.
Okay, and that would, and Ed, just for the record, that would be what is known as the detached dwelling to the rear of the property?
Yes, the detached.
Same family, okay. And what about the main house?
The main house, uh, we lived on the first floor, and we rented out the second floor.
Okay, and you grew up in the main house?
Yes.
Okay, and then again, in, in two thousand and four, you were, uh, named administrator of the estate of Helen Rosowski, and the property was sold to Mal Gersada Seraphin, who's the applicant and owner in this, in this application, correct?
Yes.
And at that time, both the main house and the, uh, the main house was, uh, used as a two-family dwelling, and the rear house continued to be used as a single-family residence, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions of Mr. Rosowski, but I thank you for appearing here tonight, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, and under the circumstances of the technical circumstances, when we would normally wait till you present all your witnesses to ask questions, uh, maybe we should just entertain the idea that if any board members has questions for this witness, we ask them now. Might be easier than bringing him back and bringing him in and whatever.
We appreciate that, sir.
All right, any board questions for this witness? Okay, it sounds like you can, uh, you can move on.
But, Mr. Chairman, just real quick, let's, let's just give the public the opportunity of any questions of the testimony that was just provided. I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand.
I'm not seeing them either.
I do have one question.
Then we can close to the.
Cheryl has a question.
Yes, so the house was purchased in nineteen fifty-eight?
Yes.
Okay, am, am I asking that question because of the ordinance was uh, created in nineteen fifty-eight? That's the same year, correct?
That, that's correct. That's my understanding. And even when I was the planning board attorney back in seventy-nine to eighty-one, it was back then, yes, nineteen fifty-eight.
Just to follow up on that, if I might, it, uh, Mr. Rosowski, was, was, was it a new house in nineteen fifty-eight?
Nope, nope.
Okay, thank you.
Is it, is it his testimony that when, in nineteen fifty-eight, when they moved into the house, that it was a two-family house?
Ed, did you hear the, the, the question from the chair?
What was that again?
Is it his testimony that in nineteen fifty-eight, when they moved into the house, that it was already being used as a two-family house?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's his testimony then, right? Any other board questions for this witness? Okay, I, I think we can move on, and if that technical, uh, apparatus falls apart, we may not need to come back to, to him as a witness.
All right, Margaret and Ted Seraphin. Where are you both?
Yes, yes.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, can we take a look at you? Okay, here we are.
Yeah, you can see us.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna start asking questions to Margaret, but you can jump in, Ted, when, uh, Margaret may need some help, okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Margaret, where do you and Ted reside currently? Where do you live?
Oh. We live in, uh, eleven Jefferson Avenue, New Brunswick.
Okay, and when did you first learn about the property that's the subject of this application, which is eighteen Home Street?
Uh, I'm not quite understand what it.
Did you, when, uh, how will you first hear about this property?
Oh, 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 okay, maybe I can.
We know you purchased it. The deed says you purchased it in two thousand and four.
That's correct, yeah. I, uh, I knew Miss, uh, Miss, Mr. and Mrs. Rosowski many years ago before, uh, we purchased this property from the church.
Okay.
Uh, and I also visited many times of them at this property because, uh, I knew the family Roszkowskis, as my friend, also, uh, his name is, uh, uh, I have a radar someplace. He's, he lived at the small house attached to the garage. He were, I was the young age, uh, and I, uh, visit him many times at that property, so he's.
All right, so when, so when you first became interested in the property, what was located on the property? What structures were located?
Uh, was eighteen Home Street.
Okay, and then was there a house on the property, two houses?
Yeah, it was, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Rosowski, they live in, uh, downstairs. They were renting upstairs, and they were renting the, to my friend at that time, when I remember was the, uh, he, my friend live on a, uh, attached to the small house to the garage.
All right, and, and then subsequently in two thousand and four, Margaret purchased the property, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, you'll have to say yes, Margaret, okay?
Yes.
Okay, since that time, since two thousand and four, when you purchased the property seventeen or eighteen years ago, has, has the main house been rented as a two-family?
Main house will be rented how two-family house.
Okay, and the rear structure, the detached structure, has that been rented continuously since two thousand and four until the fire in last year?
Yes, correct. Was all the time rented this attached house, small house.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about the fire that occurred in the rear, uh, dwelling. Ted, uh, that occurred in March of, uh, last year, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, nineteen March nineteen, our tenant call us was fired.
Okay, called, called you and said there was a fire. Now, what, what was the damage in the fire? What was damaged?
Uh, I believe the, most of the damage, uh, are from the smoke and, uh, from water and some heat.
Right, was it basically interior damage?
The fire start outside on a, somebody dropped a cigarette, uh, uh, in front of the small house on a couch. And, uh, so the main fire was outside and brought the fire inside, uh, so the, uh.
Was the structure itself damaged?
It's just, uh, even with my knowledge, the structures, uh, is, uh, not damaged at all. Need to be replaced because the electric meltdown, so have to be replaced, electric, sheetrock, where, uh, uh, insulation, uh, or, and minor plumbing repairs.
All right, did you subsequently then apply for construction permits?
Yes, I did, I did.
Okay, and ultimately you were denied because of zoning, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's why you're here?
That's why I'm here.
Okay, what, what happened to your tenant?
My tenant, uh, uh, because we have to contact with insurance, insurance told us, uh, we have to know tenant is not possible to live in this house. Uh, I give back security deposit and I told, listen guys, I'm sorry about situation like that. Please find new place to live. And they, you know.
All right, what is your intention if, if in fact the, the, the house is completed, that the interior is repaired? Is it your intention to continue to rent the property?
Yes, of course, and they still, still people, the same people call me.
Okay.
Because his family live thirteen years, you know, and they, they won't stay with me, with us.
Okay, did I tell you that the township technical review report, uh, indicated that, uh, it may be considered a multifamily property and then would have to be registered with the state? Did I inform you of that?
Yes, yes, and.
And what could you, what could you tell the board?
I can do, I can do, I can do everything what is required, okay?
Okay. And did, were you visited by the state?
Yes, after fire, my tenant downstairs first call me. Some lady from state visited this property, she left business card and she need contact. Uh, I came, I receive business card, I call to this lady, I have Frances Eller. Uh, her office is in Trenton, I call here and she asked me how many family is front house? And I told this front house is two-family house. And fire was, is attached garage, she told me, ah, you are fine, you don't have to registration anything.
All right, and is it your testimony? Is it your testimony that this inspector from the DCA uh, knew that there was a rear property being used as a dwelling?
Yes, this is Inspector Free Multi-Dwelling Borough of Housing Inspection. I have here business card, State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs.
All right, and, uh, just to make it clear, you're, you're asking this board to certify both the main, main house, which consists of two families, and the rear structure as pre-existing non-conforming uses, is that what you're requesting?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further question of these witnesses.
Okay, is there any question from the board?
I have a question, I'm not sure if it's for, for Mark, but how would, how would you define two-family? Is it based on number of plumbing or like what?
Well, there's two, there's two separate dwelling units. Um, it's separate, with, with separate, I, I haven't been in the, in the structure myself, so I don't know the exact layout, but I mean, the testimony is that there are two separate dwelling units in the first, in the first house, and there's a third dwelling unit in the separate accessory structure. So it must have its own kitchen facility, its own bedrooms, presumably separate entrances, you know, all of the separate bath facilities, so all of the elements that make a dwelling unit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Okay, you can, uh, move to the next witness.
Uh, the public, Mr. Chairman?
Well, we'll do it with both of them, I just made the exception.
Thank you. All right, Dave Beakus, please.
I'm here.
All right, Dave, hi, how are you?
I am good.
Okay, Mr. Beakus, will, will you give the board and any members of the public who are here the benefit of your, uh, background qualifications and experience?
Sure, I have a extensive experience in renovating and working on older buildings in that area in New Brunswick and Sumter, uh, mostly New Brunswick, but a very similar area to that over, over many years, and I've testified in multiple, uh, boards, uh, about these issues. And actually, your last, uh, case, uh, shook my memory, um, when they mentioned the Historical Society. One of my, uh, earlier jobs on an old building was on Canal, uh, Road in Franklin to, uh, do a lot of repairs on a, uh, uh, structure, I guess, that they were in charge of. So that was one of my very first jobs, uh, with older buildings, and we restored all the exterior scroll work and porches to meet, I had a meeting with the Franklin Historical Society at that time. I don't remember the ad, exact address, but it was on the canal, you know, along the, along the canal there. Uh, um, and, but since that time, and that would have been in the nineteen eighties, I've done an awful lot of work on older buildings and have testified, I've written reports, uh, to document the age, uh, based on the components that we can locate within the building.
Okay, how, how long have you worked in construction?
I worked in construction since the summer of nineteen seventy-nine, when I got out of high school, the next day, I started as a mason laborer.
Okay, and, uh, can you bring us forward with your educational background?
Uh, well, I, I did attend college, uh, King College in New Jersey, I got a, a degree. Uh, in the nineteen nineties, I got a, a building inspector license, um, uh, you know, certification from the DCA, which I still maintain, you know, by going to classes. In other words, I could work for Franklin, New Brunswick, anywhere else and do all the inspections on the buildings. And then, well, since that time, it's mostly, you know, self-education, I, I research, uh, building, uh, construction defects and issues, literally, literally on a daily basis. I've been doing that for, uh, at least ten years now, on a full, on near full-time basis, part-time since nineteen ninety-nine or so.
And, uh, as a matter of fact, you, you appeared before this board sometime last year on, uh, an application involving, uh, property on Victor Street, is that not correct?
Yes, this will actually be my third, uh, uh, time before this board with a similar case.
And you, you qualified as an expert in, uh, dating buildings, correct?
That is correct.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would move Mr. Beakus's qualifications.
I think we can accept them, we have before.
Okay, thank you. All right, Dave, do you want to bring the board, uh, and explain to the board what you did and why you're here, and provide your analysis of both structures?
Yeah, um, we're gonna put anything up on the screen as we discussed earlier, or?
Yeah, bring it, bring it up.
All right, you have to, I believe you have to make me a, um, the, the, or the moderator has to make me the moderator in order for you to do this, for me to do a screen share.
Yeah, I've done that, you have, um, the ability to be the presenter.
Okay.
You should be able to do that now.
All right, give me, give me thirty seconds to get to this, uh, do you want me to start with my report to bring up?
Yes.
All right, uh, here we go.
And you did two reports.
I, um, I did an initial report, and then based on the, uh, township comments, uh, we updated that report. I, uh, I was not.
So does the up, before we present the updated report, does the updated report reflect the initial report?
Yes, it does, it's, I simply added the updated report at the very end, so it's the original report with couple more pages at the end, I didn't change any wording or anything in the original report.
All right, you want to bring up the updated report and we'll mark it as exhibit A1?
Yeah, it should, I have it, um, hopefully you guys can see it, I have it up on my screen.
I can't see it. Does anyone see it?
No one can see it.
No one could see it.
No one can see it except the witness.
Um, I can see it.
Right, that's not helpful, though.
It is on the website, I can tell you that.
It's there, no, I have it. Uh, uh, um, I, I, I will say this, the screen that I'm looking at, WebEx, does not say, uh, moderator or something, which when we went through the test run, I had some more, uh, buttons than I do now, you know?
You're a presenter, you should have the share button on the bottom.
There we go, share, there we go, screen one, let's try that. Let me, let me, uh, pull up the report again. So, can everyone see the, uh, letterhead from Mr. Linus?
No, we see your head, that's it.
I hit share and I hit, um, yeah, my head's not that much fun. Um, try share, let me try to share.
Starting to share, there we go.
All right, all right, all right, well, this, I'm, I'm, I'm in my sixties too, so all this, uh, technology, it takes a little bit to, to get it rolling. Um, anyway.
Thank you, thank you for the publicity, but my letter is not what we're looking for.
Oh, I understand that, I'm gonna go to page two. And I was, uh, um, let me get down, this is a letter, um, right here.
All right, for the record, uh, identify the report and we'll mark it as exhibit A1.
Sure, this is a report, it's called type and time of occupancy for the property at Eighteen Home Street, uh, Somerset, New Jersey.
Okay, do we have a date on the report?
Let me scroll down, it's probably, uh, it's September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, and it was updated on December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
The updated, the updated report was not submitted, so that, that's why we're marking this as an exhibit, correct?
Well, it was submitted.
Oh, it was.
But we're still marking it as an exhibit.
Okay.
Yeah, and just for the record, it was submitted, um, in the timeframe required by law, um, for an exhibit, and it has been posted on the website two days prior to the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dave, go ahead.
All right, let me go to, uh, the next page where we start. Um, I was out there on, uh, September thirteenth, and I did my investigation of the rear, at that time, with the rear building only. And then when I came back, of course, the first thing I did was do a, uh, a property search to find out when the property was built. I use, uh, New Jersey parcels, and that indicated that the property was built in nineteen thirty-five. And then identified the primary building and a garage, and then the living area, which is actually next to the garage, which consisted of a bedroom and a kitchen area. Um, when I got to the building, all the sheet rock and all that stuff was already removed, it was demoed, it was left with, um, you know, studs and, uh, exposed piping and, and different, um, you know, the stuff you would see once you took the sheet rock and finished materials off the wall. Uh, what I found in the one, in this one back wall was actually a mix of different construction. Uh, some of it was obviously, uh, you know, a, um, a little bit sooner, but then appeared to be, um, replacement, if you look at the left wall, that's all full-size two-by-fours, in other words, are not a nominal two-by-four, which we've seen since the fifties and sixties. So there are full two inches by four inches and not a, um, uh, inch and a half by, uh, three and a half inches what we see now. Uh, more importantly than the studs on the back wall, which were more modern, was the ceiling, was rough, roughed sawn lumber, it wasn't finished, which means it almost certainly came from a, a, a local mill, you know, in, prior to nineteen, prior to nineteen forty. Uh, you know, it wasn't finished like the lumber you see now, you would have seen from the fifties and sixties, and that's a pretty good indication of original construction. Well, as we move on, we'll see that the floor also was the same. Uh, these are full-size floor joists, they were laid right onto the dirt, which would have been common in the thirties and, uh, early forties, twenties and tens for that matter. Um, and they're also full-size, which indicates, you know, prior nineteen, prior nineteen forty, uh, construction prior nineteen fifty. Um, also, the type of framing that they used, they were all notch, it was called let-in, again, that indicates a older style construction than you would have seen in the, uh, minimum of the nineteen, early nineteen sixties on, where we moved to what's called Western platform framing, where everything just sits on top of it. This notching is very common, if you go into all building, older buildings in, in the Somerset area of, of Franklin and just about anywhere in New Brunswick, uh, you'll see this type of construction built, many, many of the houses built nineteen ten, nineteen twenty, in that range. This particular house was apparently built nineteen thirty-five, and this is what would be expected for that timeframe, so there was no surprises with that. Let me get to the next page. Uh, an interesting point, because this house had a garage also on it, uh, this.
Again, at this point, uh, Dave, just for the record, we're speaking about the detached dwelling to the rear.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yes, um, in, interestingly here, what you see is a chimney. This chimney was framed in with the original framing. Uh, if this building was intended only as used as a garage in the nineteen thirties or forties, it almost certainly would not have had a built-in chimney, even back then, people didn't, generally did not eat their garages, you know? The, the chimney and the, the construction, and you could even still see some of the old lath, uh, if you look on the left-hand side arrow, you'll see some lath in there. Um, you know, indicating that this chimney was placed, you know, with that lath. Um, this is a clear indication that the intention, when this building was built, was for occupancy, and not just as storage or to put a carriage or, or a Model T in, on that line. And then, same thing, if you look at, this is the, uh, the finished floor in there, it's tongue and groove, um, uh, finished floor, which again, you would, you would not see tongue and groove finished flooring in a garage or a building, uh, just for storage in your backyard. A, a T and G floor such as that would have been used, it, it, its intended use would have been for a finished space, a living space. And if we keep that, arrows off, sorry. Now, here's a real good find, and this actually happened in another building, um, if you can see it, this is a newspaper that was placed over the, uh, flooring, and it was, although it was almost certainly linoleum, over, over the flooring for a kitchen.
You found that in the, you found that in the house?
Yes, it still, it was still, it, it got pushed into the, over, you know, decades, it was underneath the linoleum, and then, when the owner, when Mr. Seraphin removed the finished products in here, this, this newspaper impression, you, you can't get this off if you can't just lay it down, it's like, you know, in there. Um, I, I found this, and it was dated June twelfth, nineteen forty-one, which indicates that the kitchen floor was put down, you know, at a timeframe, I doubt they, you know, put the, put it down the day after they bought the newspaper, but certainly, um, within that timeframe, using newspapers as a separation between linoleum and a wood floor, or, or even a concrete floor was very common in the, in the twenties, thirties and, and forties, it wasn't again to the fifties and sixties that you started seeing, you know, tar paper, rosin paper and things like that to use as your separation material, so again, this is very indicative of, of, in this case, although I believe the building was built before nineteen forty-one, we know the kitchen floor probably went in or about nineteen forty-one. And again, because it was used to support, uh, uh, linoleum, that indicates a kitchen or a bathroom, in this case, it was a kitchen. Um, and, and again, an occupancy and a use, not a, not for storage or to put your car or to, you know, keep items like that. On the outside of the building, where there was a bit of a fire damage, yours, there was two sidings, there was the faux brick, which is a asphalt-based product, incredibly common in the New Brunswick area in the nineteen twenties, and in this case, up to nineteen thirties. At a subsequent time, probably in the sixties, maybe the fifties, it was covered, you know, with, with aluminum siding. And, but the original siding remains, and again, this siding is definitely indicative of prior, you know, nineteen fifties, uh, uh, typical construction. Nothing, nothing, um, surprising again there, and what we'd expect for a building that was built in nineteen thirty-five. My arrows are gonna be at part-time here. Uh, we discussed the bricks, so I concluded with the original report and sup, fully support that this, uh, uh, rear structure was built and occupied at least from nineteen forty-one or thereabouts, and most likely built at the same time as the original building or shortly thereafter. As I indicated earlier, uh, based on, uh, a, a report's feedback from township, it was requested that I go back out and look at the main building. At that happen, and it happened with a short amount of time, I personally could not go, my father passed away on the twenty-ninth, and he was gravely ill several days before that, and I was by his side. So I did send my son out to take the pictures of the interior and the exterior of the primary building, and he met the owners there, and then once I got the pictures back, I reviewed them, and, uh, what I found was, on the outside, there's nothing off the bat that says this building was built nineteen thirty-five, only because it was, you know, upgraded and renovated over, you know, many years. Again, we have aluminum siding, you know, newer porch, there's, uh, uh, you know, cultured stone on the, on the foundation, which certainly wasn't done in nineteen thirty-five. But these things would be typical for a house that's, you know, going on a hundred years old to be updated over time. And then when we went on the inside of the building, that's, you're just, just different shots, left side, rear, again. Uh, this was the one dead giveaway, uh, when they went into the basement and, um, looked up in there, what you see in this picture is knob and tube wiring. Uh, that's, that, that disappeared in the forties for the most part, and it was gone by the fifties. So again, this is the primary structure. So again, this is the primary structure we're talking about, indicating pre-1940 construction, indicating as we looked at the, at the public records, 1935. There's little doubt that the first building, uh, the primary building in the front on the road was built in 1935. This, this knob and tube wiring is very definitive for that. Um, and based to one of the questions from one of the board members, you can see right here, they asked how many units in the first building. You see three electric meters, one for the owner, one for the back building and separated, um, um, for first, second floor and one for the rear building. So the first, the first two meters are showing that, you know, the, the primary building, there's, it's a two-family, because it has separate utilities. And based on my review of the pictures that my son took, particularly of the type, you know, the type of wood and the knob and tube wiring, I concluded that the front building was in fact built in 1935, and the rear building was built at or shortly thereafter, and that both buildings were occupied as, um, were both, both buildings were occupied, the back as a single unit and the front as a two-unit building. Uh, I obviously have no indication of what happened since the 50s on, but you already have testimony to that effect.
All right, I have no further questions. Thank you, Dave.
No problem.
Okay, any board member questions?
Just one, one, go ahead.
So are all the other homes or some of the other homes on near Home Street or between Home and Ambrose, are most of these also multifamily, like more than two family, or do some of them also have this detached unit in the back? Or is this the only one?
I, I was not asked, nor did I research adjacent properties. I can tell you, I did do research on a building across the street several years ago, and that was a multifamily. Uh, but again, I wasn't asked, I certainly could have, but I, you know, it wasn't, you know, wasn't asked to do that.
And, and again, we're not asking for any use variance or non-permitted use or anything like that. Uh, what we're trying to do is get this certified as pre-existing non-conforming uses under the law.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
And I think maybe perhaps the other way to, maybe another way to say it is, the applicant's not necessarily asking or trying to prove to the board that, um, this is a beneficial thing, that this is, uh, they don't have to prove that it's consistent with the intent of zoning, et cetera. This is more of a, um, uh, an exercise of proving that, that this situation existed, more of a technical exercise, that this situation existed prior to 1958. Uh, and that, that is the sum of what they need to prove to you. Did this exist before zoning? So then, and therefore, it's another term for this is basically grandfathered. So they're, so they're basically trying to certify that this use predated zoning.
Yeah, I understand. I was just curious if, you know, all the other properties were just similar, but I understand.
Yeah, I mean, there, I, I'll just tell you, just as the township planner, that, that there are, there are other homes or other properties in that area, because it is the oldest area in, in the township or one of the older areas of the township of development, and a lot of the homes were built before zoning came into, came into play, into being. So yes, there are other homes like this in that area generally.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
The other questions?
I, I just have one question. So Mr. Bekus, I, just as far as the main home, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, you've, you've, through the knob and tube wiring, you've, uh, addressed the age of the construction of the structure as a whole. But I don't think you've provided any evidence that, uh, construction-related evidence that the, that the building, the main structure was separated prior to 1958 into two separate units. Is that fair to say?
Um, yes, um, you know, again, I, I was not in that building. I could not go because of the death of the family. Um, but the building, it was obviously renovated multiple times, uh, you know, over the course of years. Um, and it had the appearances from the outside of a two-family, and I believe there was previous testimony, at least from 1958, uh, when, when, um, the previous son's, oh, owner's son was there, that it was occupied as a two-family. I saw nothing that would dissuade me, you know, of that. Um, the knob and tube wiring itself, correct? No, that does not indicate a two-family use. That indicates a pre-1940 construction.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? That's, uh, that completes your witnesses, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to make a few comments on the TRC report, uh, dated November 30th, 2021. There were four review comments submitted by the TRC. The first one uh, just reflects the fact that we're here for pre-existing non-conforming use, and we've offered testimony in support of that. Uh, number two, there was a notation in the construction report, uh, that it only addressed the detached structure. We took care of that, and we cured that by, uh, filing and testifying as to the main home. Uh, and that's before the board in the form of Exhibit A1. Uh, item number three, initially, Mr. Rozowski, who's 74, now he's 76 years old, uh, submitted a certification. Uh, the board attorney mentioned that, uh, he had to be subject to cross-examination. That's why we brought him in here to testify, and he was subject to cross-examination. And finally, uh, the indication that maybe this is a, should be registered with the state. You've heard the testimony of Mrs. Seraphin, who indicated that, uh, they did send, somebody did send, send an inspector down from the state, and the inspector didn't, seemed to indicate that it was not subject to, uh, that type of registration. I also submitted a memorandum, uh, today, uh, to Mr. Reagan. I'm not sure he's had the time to review it fully. But, uh, based on the law itself, I don't think it qualifies as a multifamily dwelling in that you have a two-family structure and then you have a single-family structure. And although it adds up to three, I don't think the law encompasses that kind of, uh, situation from the DCA. So having said that, uh, I'll conclude by indicating that I think that the proofs are very clear. I think the board, uh, has the opportunity to, uh, affirm, uh, the pre, uh, pre-existing non-conforming uses. Again, I think we're indeed fortunate to have someone alive. I remember in the old days, uh, when I used to present pre-existing non-conforming uses, there was a fellow on the Board of Adjustment by the name of Al Besenye, and Mr. Besenye, uh, was old enough at the time, uh, to, to go back to 58 and indicate whether he recalled that the uses that were being proposed were indeed pre-existing. So as we go along in the future, uh, I suspect that, um, proofs of pre-existing non-conforming uses may be difficult, if not impossible. But again, in this particular case, uh, I think both as to the construction of the, uh, both units, both of the houses, as well as the testimony, uh, supports the continuation of the pre-existing non-conforming uses, which is a two-family residence, the main residence, and a single-family residence to the rear.
Okay, then we'll open to the public.
Okay, so for the purpose of the public, this is, um, to ask questions of the testimony that was provided by Mr. Bekus, as well as the applicants, um, and/or if you have any comments that you want to provide the board on this, uh, certification of pre-existing non-conforming use. If you're on WebEx, you can use the raised hand function that was described previously, or if you're calling in, you can press star three. And I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, we'll close to the public. I think you, uh, already gave it a, an appropriate summary, so-
A little bit premature, but I gave it, yes.
Mr. Magnus, if you could drop your screen, please. Stop sharing your screen.
Okay, if there are no, uh, other board comments, we can move on to.
I just, I just had one question. Um, I wasn't clear if the certification um, by Edward Rozowski was, was a notarized copy sent?
No, as a matter of fact, that's why he appeared tonight, so that he would be subject to cross-examination.
Okay.
Okay, other questions?
Okay.
Yes, exactly. There was, you know, the applicant had initially submitted the certification without, uh, uh, it being notarized. Um, but really, you know, whether it was notarized or not, from my point of view, really didn't matter. The importance was that, uh, that he should appear before the board to give you the opportunity to, uh, to, you know, one, to provide testimony, and then for you to, uh, to ask him any questions and cross-examine him as to the, the statements that he, that he made in, in the certification as well as on the record.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion.
This is kind of a complicated one. It seems to me that we have to address two things. We have to address whether or not the buildings were a non-conforming use. And there's something else that's floating around out there that's actually additional that I'm not sure I get. But Mr. Linus, maybe you could help me to think about what I should be saying.
All right, i- i- if the board is, is of a frame of mind to approve the application, then the motion would be to approve the pre-existing non-conforming uses on the property, which would include the two-family main dwelling and the single-family rear dwelling.
Okay, I get that. That's fine. If that's all it is, then it's easy. Uh, I hereby, uh, move that we grant.
The pre-existing non-conforming uses.
I gotta find the name. I gotta find the thing. I thought I had it right here, but I have the other one. Here we go. I'm with the, the Ma, Margaret Seraphin, uh, who is, is located at, uh, 18 Home Street, Somerset, New Jersey. Um, a declaration by the, um, the Board of Adjustment that the houses, uh, located on, uh, the property, located at Block 181, lots 24 and 25, uh, were built and used for their current use prior to the existence of the first zoning law in Franklin Township.
That would be the motion.
And I think one, yeah, one additional point would be that that use has been continuous since that time.
Thank you, Frank.
And then, then the last piece of it, I think, and, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, it would be the issuance, the authorization for you as the zoning officer to issue, issue the necessary certificate of non-conformity, um, so that they could proceed with, I guess, uh, obtaining building permits and making the improvements necessary.
Yeah, I mean, if this, yes, this, this board certifies, um, certifies as, as pre-existing non-conforming use, then that would essentially automatically authorize, uh, me as the zoning officer to sign the zoning permit as it, as it, as a permitted use.
Great, thanks.
Okay, was there a second?
Yes, I second. This is Cheryl.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Propanek?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepard?
Uh, this was a great presentation by Mr. Linus. I didn't know he was representing them. There was a lot of different, uh, things to deal with, and I thought that that was a well-done job. Yes.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
That just means as he's getting older, he's getting better. And finally, is all I can say.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, before you go, uh, let me just, after, well after the board closed the, the public hearing, uh, we did have at least two people raise their hand. Uh, I have a feeling that the people did not raise, were not raising their hand on this application. Uh, I think we should, uh, take this opportunity to remind the public again that earlier in the meeting, 1784, um, was carried. Christine, what was the date? When is that going to be heard?
Going to be heard on February 3rd. Be a virtual meeting at 7:30 in the evening.
And what's the full title, the full title of that, 1784?
1784 Capital Holdings LLC, number ZBA 210009.
So Christine previously in the meeting announced that that was going to be carried. Um, and if you have any questions, you can contact her, uh, at the Planning and Zoning Office as far as how to participate in that meeting. And also earlier, the chairman had made, uh, the statement that there, we do have another application that this board has not yet heard, uh, for the Levin property or the Kmart property. That was not noticed for tonight, and it was not, not going to be heard tonight. Right now, it's tentatively scheduled for, uh, in two weeks. Uh, again, that's up on the website. Um, and if that's going to be heard, it'll have to be noticed to, to, by law. So if you're here to speak to that, you'll have to appear at those hearings and offer your questions and comments to the board in the context of those hearings.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Thomas, um, I have to draw up a resolution for, uh, Frank being made the, um, attorney. So he could make an appointment to just come in sometime and sign. Uh, Frank, I don't really know, you're really too far away just to make a trip down. Would it, legally, would it be okay if I scanned the resolution to you and you sign and scan it back so that it's like an original signature? Would that, do you think that would be acceptable to the clerk's office?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'll do that tomorrow.
My, my, I'm finished, right? Yes?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't even see you come here. Yeah, you're done.
Well, yeah, okay.
Well, well done.
We finished? We're done.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year. All right, so Frank, you, I'll send it to you and you can find it. Uh, Bob, do you want to do the same thing, or do you want to come to the township and sign it? It's up to you.
I'll just, I'll just come in.
Okay, all right. It should be ready tomorrow, so, um, I'll scan it over to Frank when it's ready, and then whenever you want to come in. Actually, wait for me to get Frank's back, because we all have to sign it together. We can't give her a different one. So let's wait. Bob, I'll call you when Frank signs it, and then you just come when it, your convenience and, and, uh, sign your part, and then I'll sign the last part, okay?
Yeah, I probably won't get to my office until Monday to do it.
Okay, that's fine.
On Monday and get it back to you then.
Okay.
It's no problem. I can come Monday or Tuesday, either one. It doesn't matter.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other business? I just wanted to give a quick question to Frank. I know everybody, it's over, like to get gone and everything. This is the third time we heard from at least this witness, David Beckus, and I have no problem with him or no issue or anything. But I started to think a little bit, we, we have no standard that I know of to accept his credentials as an expert, like an architect or an engineer or a planner. Is there, is there a standard that the municipal land use law uses for expert like this? I mean, there's no license in what he is doing.
I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, and I will look into it. Um, I, I think based on, you know, the, the qualifications that he presented to you this evening, um, in light of, you know, the nature of his testimony, um, I, I think that's probably was the, would be the extent of, you know, of, of his experience uh, and I guess whatever educational background, whether it's, uh, uh, really, you know, um, you know, schooling or, 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 or on-the-job training. Uh, but ultimately, I think it's the board's determination as to whether they think he's qualified, you know, for, for the purposes that he's going to, to testify. But I'll, I'll take a look on, on that particular issue if there's something beyond just a licensed professional who typically appears before the board.
Well, we have a history with him, and, and I'm not questioning his competence or anything like that. But my issue is if, if another one of these comes up, as may well happen, then we have a, an expert, a different one. and we have an expert, a different one that we're not familiar with. I don't, I'm not aware of a standard that we can use. At a time, after we hear him, I don't know. I don't want to waste everybody's time.
Yeah, just a quick thing, though. He did, he is a licensed, I think he said he was a licensed building inspector.
Yeah, he was a, yeah, he was a licensed building inspector. Yeah, so I think that's what was my point, that he did, he did put on the record, you know, that he had that background or that certification. So I do think depending upon the nature of the testimony that somebody's going to give if they're not a, you know, a typical licensed professional, like a professional engineer, professional planner, that it's really up to the board, you know, to determine, you know, based on their qualifications, you know, if you believe, you know, that they're an expert. That they are. And I know, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't concerned because, as you said, Mr. Chairman, he's appeared previously before you in similar situations, and you had previously accepted him, you know, as an expert. But I'll take a look at it in the future.
Yeah, if I could offer too. I think, I think in a situation like that, I think this is such a niche thing that he does. So I think, you know, any, I don't think being a building inspector by itself qualifies him. But I think that he has created this kind of expertise. And I think for somebody like him, for something specific like this, I think asking such a witness if they've been accepted in other, before other planning boards or zoning boards of adjustment on these, I think could, that could help you decide. If they've said yes, if we've, if they say no, then that you may weigh that in one way. Or if he said, or if he or she says, yes, I've been qualified, you know, in front of three dozen boards in the state of New Jersey over the last 20 years, then that may give you a little.